All right, it's 7 o'clock and we are back in open session. The next item on the agenda is public comments. And it looks like we have one person who signed up, Jack O'Brien, who's going to speak about recess equipment.
Whoa, good job.
Nice.
Wow.
He's a pro.
Hello, my name is Jack O'Brien and I live at 117 Woodside Road and I am a 4th grade student at Central School. I am here tonight to address a concern of the inequity of playground equipment at District 96, specifically basketball hoops for students to use during recess. I've brought my concerns through various channels of administration and PTO for two years and I continue my mission to bring basketball hoops to our school. Currently, Ames School has a basketball hoop and the students there can benefit from using dunk shots and fadeaway shots. We want the same chance to do a layup at Central. This would also benefit Hauser students, too. Currently, we spend our time playing kickball or football, which can end up in arguments on the playground because these sports are riddled with interpretation.
Whoa.
Basketball leaves it to the rim to the side. Please consider adding basketball hoops to our playground at Central School. Thank you for your time serving the students of District 96.
Thank you, Jack, for your comments.
You're welcome.
Paul, you were asking for any in-Player comments about... I just got one.
That sounds like a good...
No, it's a great, great, great idea.
Great presentation.
This is our architect here.
I feel like asking if you wrote that yourself, I want to make you my assistant. That was great.
Well, thank you very much.
Super.
It was very interesting comments.
Thanks, Jack.
You're pretty thorough.
If there are no other comments, then the next item on the agenda is, are there any changes that anyone wants to make to the agenda? If there are no changes, the next item is the superintendent's report.
And I'll quickly turn it over to Merrill, who already has the Five Essentials data up there.
That's what we're going to talk about first, the same thing. I'm going to grab this mic easily here. So, the Five Essentials is a survey that is administered in February of each school year. And now the clicker's not working, of course not. Okay, we'll just get up. And so this data, while it was given a while ago, is a bit older. We're going to go through it because it will give us some indication of what we can do next. Oh.
You're making me feel so good.
Aren't I, though? It seems like we're not mirrored correctly. Done.
Mr. Tofano.
We're not mirrored properly. That's why it wasn't working.
You were flawless at the Institute data.
I know, right? There, oh, maybe it wasn't. Okay, we're good now. Yeah, there we go. Okay. So, what is the Five Essentials? It's a tool for school improvement planning. It looks more at the conditions around the organization that help provide us with a platform for looking at, not just teaching and learning, but climate and culture and student input. And so, we're going to go through the domains that it encompasses. And it's been proven to be comprehensive in that it touches all stakeholders when administered and it has contributed to school improvement. There's some cautions in sizes of schools when you're using this data, so we're going to talk about that in a minute. But the students participate in two aspects of it. The ambitious instruction and supportive environment. So those two domains are where the students provide feedback. Parents provide feedback in the domain of involved families. And then the staff provides feedback in the other two domains of effective leaders and collaborative structures. So, so those are the five. Effective leaders, which looks at how the principal works with their staff to implement a strategic vision for school success. Collaborative teachers is how the staff is committed to the school and the professional development and working together to improve things. Involved families is the relationship between the families and the school itself and how they support learning. And then the supportive environment looks at, is the school safe, orderly? Do we have high expectations for students? Are they supported by their peers and their teachers? And then ambitious instruction looks at how academically demanding our classes are and how engaging they are for the students.
Could you just, any of those domains, just repeat again, who completes the deck?
Sure. So, effective leaders are completed by staff. Collaborative teachers by staff. Involved families, parents. And the last two by students.
Okay.
Only six through eight, though. Grades six through eight only.
Okay, thanks.
The response rates do make a difference. The Five Essential surveys looks for at least 50 percent to consider the data to be valid and reliable. So I just highlighted Blythe as an example, where 15, only 15.8 percent of the parents responded and then only 57.9 percent of the staff responded. What we think happened with Blythe with that number is that if we share staff, we believe that they only completed the survey for one of the buildings that they work in and not both because Blythe shares a lot of certified staff and therefore didn't realize they could fill it out for both buildings. So we have to make sure that we're very clear that they should be filling it out for both buildings when they're working in more than one, or all three, if they're working in three. And so, the 57.9 percent teacher rate reflects only about 10 teachers total in that building when you look at the size of the staff. So, you have to look at the data with some, a little bit of caution because of the size of the response rates. Central had a low parent response rate, as did Ames. We all did. I mean, last year, Five Essentials was looking for 30 percent as a parent response rate. The year before, it was 50 percent. But schools could not get that kind of a response, so they lowered it to 30 percent. And even that proved difficult, not just here, but in a lot of places, so.
Is this, how does this response rate compare to last year, particularly with the stat? Well, I guess, how does it, the response rate compare with parents for last year? But also, did you see the same thing?
I'd have to look. I didn't specifically dive into the response rates. But in other districts, this was not dissimilar from what we experienced.
I guess I'm just curious if we had the same problem last year with people responding for, staff responding for only one?
Oh, I don't know. I'd have to look, Mary Rose. I didn't, you know what? I didn't look at that to see what percentage of Blythe responded. But I can get back to you and let you know that.
Okay.
It's easy to pull up. That link I sent you to in the board packet will take you to the 2014, so we could easily look that up. Okay. So, as a district, in last year's data, you see on the left, the indicators go from low response or not applicable to least implementation, all the way up to most implementation. And in all of the areas where average or above, effective leaders average, collaborative teachers average, supportive environment average, ambitious instruction more, and involved families more. Not very different from last year's data, slight changes. So, overall district performance, you can see they range from, the indicators range from not yet to well organized. As an overall district, we fall into the organized range, which is one level below well organized, with the schools below.
So, we're also just over the...
Just over the Illinois.
I mean, just over the line from moderately to organized, are we not?
No, we're in about the middle of that box there. In organized. See where the diamond is?
I see the diamond.
It's hard to see on that slide. If you look in the board book presentation, it'd be, it's a little clearer. The effective leaders category is an area of opportunity. Now, each area has also indicators within it, so there were a couple strengths in this area, which I'll speak to in a little bit. But overall, that's an area that I'm going to pull out and talk about where the opportunity is in terms of where we're headed. And collaborative teachers is the other area. So the two areas where the staff responded, I'm going to highlight some areas of growth in that, in those categories. But there were also some strengths within some of the indicators. Part of what you also want to recognize is the time of year that this is administered and what's happening in the district at that point in time. So that's also a factor when you have staff responding to a survey. You always want to consider, like, when it's happening and what's going on at that point in time. Involved families was an area of strength in the district. The rankings, you know, are from 0 to 100, much like a percentile ranking score. And so, you can see that that's a 69 and parents are feeling very good about their connections. Within that area of involved families, the teacher-parent trust rating, which is one of the indicators that's in that area, was extremely high. So, parents feel very much like they can speak to the teachers, interact with the teachers, and have a high level of trust there. Ambitious instruction, the students do feel like we are demanding and providing them with a quality program, as you can see there. They definitely ranked that fairly high. And so I was kind of happy to see that coming in here because that's, as a curriculum person, always nice to see. And then supportive environment, kind of in the average range. We're doing some things around the positive behavioral support system this year, so that we should see some big impact from that because there's a lot more peer-to-peer things going on. So, overall strengths in the area of effective leaders, program coherence is one of the indicators under that overall domain. And that looks at, how are we feeling about the program that the principals are managing in the buildings as a whole? What is it like? Do we feel like we're coherent and cohesive in what we're doing? And so, that was an overall strength in that category in the district. And under collaborative teachers, collaborative practices was an indicator of strength in that area, even though those two domains are opportunities. Those two areas were the strengths within the domain. And collaborative practices speaks to teachers working together to accomplish things. Under involved families, I mentioned the teacher-parent trust piece and the parent involvement in the school. Both came out as strengths. And the supportive environment, the student-teacher trust. So it's nice to see people feel comfortable approaching our staff. Ambitious instruction across the board. In both ELA, math, the pressure kids feel, the quality of student discussion, all were rated extremely positive. So, it's nice to see students, by the time they get to Hauser, are feeling very comfortable here. Opportunities for growth in the area of effective leaders. Instructional leadership was really pulled this category down a bit. We are looking to improve that. The indicator within there, leaders to provide useful feedback to improve teaching. Our new evaluation system will be perfect for moving this forward because it will require a lot more principal-teacher contact with respect to conferencing and student growth and meeting around instructional needs. So, the walkthroughs, all of that, there will be much more of teacher-principal interaction around teaching and learning with respect to our new evaluation system. So I expect that that will improve the feedback that people are receiving with respect to teaching. And then with respect to collaborative teachers, the area that pulled it down was quality professional development. And those bulleted items below there are the ones that stood out. Opportunities to work productively with teachers from other schools. So we are working right now on common assessments and training that we are doing actually in horizontal teams across the district. So buildings are mixing for those opportunities quite a bit. And it's very grade level focused, so that's nice, a job-alike focus. So we're, our department, K through 8, music, K through 8. So hopefully that will improve. Another indicator is including enough time to think carefully about trying to evaluate new ideas and offer sustained and coherently focused professional development rather than short-term and unrelated. Again, we are working on some huge pieces of content professional development that's very focused on sustainable instructional strategies and best practice. So I suspect that as we roll out the professional development plan this year, that that will address some of those needs that were identified by the staff. I've done a lot of surveying of staff. They're probably going to be tired of me by the end of the year. But trying to get their needs met real intentionally through getting their feedback each time. So that's sort of the Five Essentials in a nutshell and an overview of what is a pretty in-depth survey.
Any questions for...
Yeah, just one, and I think I know the answer, I guess. Supportive environment, more implementation. We just see Hauser on the slide and that's because only the house...
Only six through eight, correct.
And that's a student-driven component.
Correct. And that's how Five Essentials is formatted. It doesn't allow for responses from the younger kids, which we should maybe in the future. We were talking about this as a leadership team. There are surveys out there that are similar that the state will allow as a substitute for Five Essentials. There's three others that they've approved. And one of them actually does allow for kids in 3 through 5 to provide feedback, which might be kind of interesting and something we might want to consider since we do have four buildings and a lot of 3 through 5 students. I'd love to hear what they have to say. I know my two at home have a lot to say. So, you know, we might want to think about that in the future. There are other tools because districts have wanted to see more expansive kinds of responses that are more relevant to what's happening in schools. So, that's something to explore.
And then just, any thoughts on how you get to increase the response rates?
We're going to try to market it in different ways this year. You know, maybe not everything, it always has to be electronic since it requires an electronic response. So, might do even a paper flyer or something this year, hand it out at, you know, when we have an event or something, so that people have laptops out in the office. We talked about, I think they tried that last year, having the laptop right there in the office when someone comes in, "Can you please take a minute to do it?" Things like that.
Okay, cool.
So the, the data, it was, the survey was back in February.
Correct.
When, when is the data available?
Not until the fall. So we just got it less, few weeks.
Why is that? In this age of computers that we have to...
Well, you'd have to call the university. You'd have to call University of Chicago to ask that question. I mean, I, you know, I don't know.
I guess what I'm thinking is, we got some survey results that indicated that professional development was not so well...
Received.
Received last year. And that came in February. Let me finish. If we would have perhaps known that in March, perhaps there could have been...
An adjustment.
Some adjustment for the last few months.
I'm just trying to think of when professional development got started, though, last year. I'm wondering if the timing of this...
It started in September.
It did, okay.
Remember the...
Okay, you're right, with early release.
The good thing is that Merrill's been doing surveys of the staff after all the professional development. So hopefully in-house, we're going to start.
Right.
Right.
You'll get the feedback instantly.
Right. So, the next item that...
The next item happens to be the survey that got results back the next day.
Yes. So, if you have near crack it, if you look and you'll see that survey, which I did after I did all that content screening, which showed that everybody felt very strongly that it was well-delivered, well-received, connected to what they were doing.
Structured, the whole bit.
Meaningful, right. So that's more relevant and meaningful to me than something that I...
And again, that's the instant feedback you're looking for that can allow you to get direction for the future as opposed to waiting six months.
And I actually put a question on the bottom of it that said, as we plan for...
February till October, that's eight months.
It's not helpful, is it?
Well, then I had another question at the bottom of the graph that you're seeing that said, as we plan for February, what do I need to take into consideration? So you don't have all those anecdotal because it was things like, "Please provide us with resources for this." And you didn't need all that minutia, but I need it, so I know what I need.
That was on the Five Essentials?
No, that was on one item.
Okay, yours, okay.
So that I can respond on the next Institute Day to make sure that I have responded to their needs.
The one comment that I would have from the, from the results is that you said that three categories were average. And, and we've, we're, we believe, and we've been told by many people, that we're well above average. And I'm just wondering why there's a little disconnect there between what we're being told and what maybe the teachers are seeing in the classroom.
Well, not all of this is based necessarily on the classroom itself and the instruction with students. This is a lot about relationships and...
Climate.
Environment and climate. So those are the things we need to work on. But instructionally, there, I believe there are wonderful things happening. And I believe the teachers believe there are wonderful things happening for kids in this district.
Because I think this is not really a student-performance survey, other than do the junior high students feel it's challenging?
I recognize that...
This is more about environment and extraterrestrial relationships.
And it's, like I said, it's in that moment of time, so it's a snapshot.
Right.
But it, it does represent that moment of time that relationships between administration and teachers is considered on the average level. Is that...
Based on this particular data, yes. But I'd love to take another moment in time to see...
If you did it right now, it'd be very good.
I'd love to triangulate that at any given year and not just have one snapshot.
It's in the past.
Right.
It's a backward look, and that's...
It's a backward look, right. So you can look and learn and, you know, look at other tools, too, that are giving us that feedback.
Sure.
Does that get us to item number two also, since we talked about the feedback on October Day?
Do you have any questions about that graph?
I just thought maybe, since you talked about staff development between buildings, can you talk about some of the professional development activities this year that could engage them in that way?
Yeah, so we've already, so we, so the first two Institute Days, if you remember, a lot of that anecdotal feedback was, "It was so great to work with people from other buildings because I did the framework and I mixed people up." So they were in all different groups with people from all different buildings. So that was the first opportunity that they had. And then in October, we had the job-alike at grade level. So everybody was together across all four elementaries. And then Hauser, they were together both vertically and horizontally. So the ELA team all met, 6, 7, and 8. Social studies all met, which they don't often get to do vertically, so that was really nice. And then coming up in January, we're going to have some content professional development, so that's going to be K through 8. In some instances, it'll be vertical, all K through 8. Some departments, it'll be K through 5, 6 through 8. So there'd be a smattering, mixed groups for that experience. And then they're going to go back to more September, more February, where it'll be horizontal and job-alike again.
What does content professional development?
Like math, the math practices for K through 5, the shifts in the ELA instruction, the new science standards. So, we're going to mix groups so that we get that broad knowledge across different groups to take...
And what other kind of professional development is there other than content development?
Strategy. And then like assessment development. And then also instructional strategies, how we use flexible grouping, how we differentiate instruction in the classroom, those kinds of things.
Okay.
You have like your small team in your school, but you also have different schools that you teach in the same grade and have an opportunity to talk with them about strategies they're using or things that are working. It's very valuable, so I'm happy to...
So, so either you're going to sometimes, you know, do PD on content, like your actual area of, you know, instruction, or you're going to deliver professional development around instructional strategies and best practices to meet students' needs.
I get it.
I guess my, my question is to you, what's different? What are you doing different this year from you know that was done last year? You talked about content development.
I'm doing a blend of providing them with best practices and, and support with information that they need to then apply their work. So they're getting more of the current research. And last year, they did a lot of alignment. And I, you know, that, I don't like to look back because I wasn't here for how it was planned and rolled out. But last year, it was really looking at just aligning and not actually developing. Now we're developing. So we're really looking at backing up and providing some of the strategies that I just talked about or the content pieces that go with that alignment that was happening.
I see. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Who am I turning this over to?
Nobody. You can give it to the right guy. In the crossing guard in our governmental agreement, I'd like to say some nice things about not just your village manager, Jessica Francis, but also your chief of police. I had a couple meetings with them. I think we finally got to what's on the agenda, on the consent agenda, to be able to put this in place. And next month, we're also going to have a continuation of the contract with cable TV. They didn't quite get it together. They passed it at their meeting and didn't make it into our board packet, so that'll be on November's agenda. Parent-teacher handbook, a lot of people were very involved in this. I know Merrill was involved, April was involved. Who else, Margie? Gave you some feedback on the...
Oh, gosh, I had a lot of people.
A lot of different people, but the bottom line was Margie spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks putting all that together. Because if you remember, the website, I think the handbook was like two years old that was on there. And now we're going to have an updated one and it'll be a matter of every year just kind of tweaking it to be able to keep it up to date. So, you know, a lot of accolades to a lot of people, but especially to Margie for spending an inordinate amount of time putting it all together. And that, that's my report.
Okay. So, thanks, Mr. Pat. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that anyone would like to have taken off?
I, I have one that I'd like to defer into the November fourth committee, the whole meeting. The 18A, policy 7.320, the elementary school student assignment. I think we need to do a little more reading through it. I think there's conflicting messages, so we just need to reword that to get a better first reading for you guys.
And again, along that same line with the policy, I'd, I'd like to have a... Well, we could do it two ways. I have an understanding of what's going in that policy. I'm sorry, use of credit and procurement cards. That isn't clear in the written materials we've been provided.
Which, which number is that?
That would be 18B.
18B?
Yeah.
You want to pull that off?
Yeah. And then I have...
Will you, will you give us details on, like, over email and then we can defer?
Yeah, I actually have sent something to, some questions about it. I mean, I can do it in this meeting if you want.
I never got any questions, so if you could send those to me, that would be great.
I think the best thing would be just to defer both of those.
Yeah, defer, that's what I was going to say, defer both to...
So 18A, 18B, are there any other items?
I'd like to deal separate. We'll lead with the approval of the Point 28 Kite teaching position funded by Title I contract.
Which number is that?
That would be 10.
10.
And also 14, reimbursement for vacation time.
14. And then we need to pull off the minutes for the closed session meeting on October 6. That's 1D. And we need to just defer that until the next meeting. So there's a slight, just a slight change we need to make there. Are there any other changes?
Nope.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the consent agenda without 18A, 18B, 10, 14, and 1D?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, could you call the hall, please?
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, so there will be three items that are going to be deferred until next time, which are a policy, 18A, 730E2, 18B, which is the procurement cards, and then 1D, which is a minor change in the minutes. And then there are two other items that I think, Mary Rose, you wanted to talk about. One of them is the approval of the Point 28 Kite teaching position.
Yes. I would just like to ask, is there a job description for that position?
Is it the same as any other teacher that we would hire? Are they going to be working with kindergarten students, providing kindergarten instruction to at-risk students?
Okay, so it's the same exact position?
It's the same job description. It's just a part-time and smaller group.
Okay. That was my only question.
And the other, the other item that you wanted to discuss was the reimbursement for vacation time, item number 14?
Yeah, I would actually, you know, from previous discussions, it is, restate that as a recognition bonus for an exemplary employee.
So do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Yes. I move that we recognize Donna McLaughlin for her work, setting up the payroll for the collective bargaining, reflecting the collective bargaining agreement with a bonus in the amount of $1,800.
So second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Margie, could you call the hall, please?
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion passed.
You also need to do 10, yeah, too.
Yeah, and then the last item is number 10. Do we want to just, is our motion to approve the Point 28 Kite teaching position funded by the Title I grant as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Margie, could you please call the hall?
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the comments from the Riverside Education Council. Mr. House, do you have any comments?
No.
No comments today? Mr. House, do you have any comments? No comments today? Okay. At this point, then, we, we have board member comments. The first item is for the facilitators of the five focus groups to give a brief, a report about their group, so should we just go around the table?
Sure. I was the facilitator for the Culture and Climate Group at the Strategic Planning, and I had a fantastic group, and I thought it was two nights really well-spent. They came up with a lot of good ideas, and I'm actually not sure which, which of the ones ranked the highest yet, but the focuses were on prioritizing communications amongst all stakeholders and making sure that not only are we a high academic achieving district, but we're also high achieving in, in the whole child.
If I could just jump in for a second. I had more conversations with Bob Medonia today than I'm sure he would want, since he's making a move tomorrow. But bottom line is, he's gotten all the material back now. We have all of the rank orderings, the numbers in each of the categories, and all of that is going to be sent us probably tomorrow, and we're going to immediately send it out to everybody on the committee that participated. So there'll be some real instant feedback on those.
See how quick that can happen without a computer?
Well, it's because of the PARC testing, you know, we did it so fast, you know.
But overall, I thought it was a really great experience, and I thank, you know, Erin McCarthy was there. Just, we had a fantastic group, and it was 10 hours well-spent, or however long it felt.
It only seemed like 10.
Six hours well-spent.
Thank you.
Yeah, my group was curriculum and instruction, and I also had just fantastic group participators. Thank you, Cass and Mira, and everyone else that participated, of course Merrill. So we actually had a tough time narrowing it down. There were so many things we wanted to do, but it ended up being a blend of vertical, horizontal alignment of our curriculum and assessments with the whole child, like Linda was talking about, but also looking at special populations, whether it be ELL, Quest classes, special education, RTI support. So that was a huge, ended up being number one for us. We also ended up, after the group discussion, which is really useful, to talk about foreign language and how we could integrate that into our curriculum. And we also need to assess our curriculum for kindergarten, whether we want to talk about length of day, and this is something that the whole village is going to need to talk about, and how we do this, and which way we do it. And we also talked about interdisciplinary approaches between not only different grade levels, but within the classroom, and how we could engage the students in a meaningful way. So it was a tough, a tough approach to narrow, but I think we did a great job. And I really liked hearing from the other groups. I think it was so valuable. So thank you to everybody who came.
Thanks, thanks, Sheri. So I was the moderator for the Finance Group. I'd like to echo the comments that Linda and Sheri made, which was, I think this was an extremely valuable exercise. I think Dr. Medonia did a great job facilitating, and I thought it was really good to get a conversation going between the community and the administration and the board and teachers and parents, and just start talking about what our priorities should be. And I think that was an extremely valuable exercise. In Finance, we, we had a very good group, and we, we basically came up with a few priorities. And again, I don't know what the, what the final tally was in the vote, but I think...
You should have it tomorrow, hopefully.
The two, the two that I thought were, just looking at the, at the dots on the board, were aligning our spending with our priorities, which, you know, sounds obvious, but you have to make a conscious effort to make sure, yes, is the money going where it should go. And then the second priority we came up with was, I think, to preserve the fiscal strength of the district, which is important because we need to, we have, there's a lot of uncertainty about different things out there in terms of state funding and so forth, and also in terms of our own initiatives. So those are the two things that, that we sort of came up with, that I think, I think we're voted on, so.
I facilitated the Facilities Group, and I don't want to go into all the details of it, but it was, it was a really fruitful conversation, especially from the perspective of that we had such a wide variety of people within that group, and it was, it was great to see people's opinions evolve as we all discussed it. And everybody took their turns and participated, and it was real interesting to see, you know, a first opinion get thrown out there, and then as other people speak, then that, maybe that first opinion where that person felt that they, they had a strong opinion on something, their opinion evolved as they heard other people talk about it. So Dr. Medonia set us up very well for it, us, and, and trained us well for it, and it was everything he said it was going to be. I'm, I'm really glad we did it.
I think as facilitator of Human Relations, I did, that you guys pretty much have said everything. I'd like to say, though, it was interesting, though. I, I came in not knowing what to expect, and we just, you know, we kind of built this from scratch with really great people. I really appreciated. I was surprised at how many community members showed up, and I was very grateful for it, and the diversity of people. So I was pleasantly surprised by the whole process. If I were to do it again, I probably would have spaced them out. I wouldn't have put them two nights back-to-back. I'd probably make it a week apart because I realized that after, you know, leaving, I was like, oh. Then I started thinking about, you know, I, I should have, we should have brought this up, and I'm wondering if anybody else was experiencing that, so I was having...
Yeah, I had many great ideas.
Post-studying.
After I went home.
Post-studying planning remorse. But other than that, I, I was very...
Ooh, that could be a disease. Post-studying planning remorse.
But other than, it was, it was, it was very good, and I think it was a very feel-good activity between the board and, and the community and the administration. I think it was much needed. It was almost group therapy.
I agree. I was going to say, I think it was a good healing process almost.
Yeah, it was good. Yeah, it was. So I didn't know what to expect, so I was pleasantly surprised.
A lot of people, a lot of people had a lot of involvement, but here again, some accolades to Margie because she got all the, the dots, the notepads, all the logistical things together. And it was no easy task, especially putting the black one on top of the other color, you know, just to be able to differentiate. Very creative use.
We had five groups, and we have seven board members, and the other two board members that were not moderators, but did participate. So did, do you have anything to add to what's been said, or any further comments?
I don't, no. Outside the fact that I was glad I made it. You know, I didn't think I was going to, but I was glad I was able to.
All right. So the next item are the committee reports, starting with Education. Sheri?
Yes. Well, we had a pretty extensive amount of updates from Merrill, but we talked, she talked about our long-term objectives. Also, we had an overview of what we're going to do on Aaron's Law, and how, I'm happy to see it's on the website, and that we're communicating with parents and the community members.
That's cool.
And she made some recommendations on different curriculum we should, we should or could use for this. We had an update on Carnegie Math, and there's something tomorrow, I guess, or two, Thursday, I mean, Thursday, thank you. Thursday for the parents, you know, which is going to be great. Then we also had a whole bunch of things. We had a Kite Proposal Program update, and Spanish Translation and Services proposal, which I think could be really useful, just because we have so many different ways that we could improve on that and keeping it consistent. So thank you, Merrill, for like your work on that.
Next item, thanks, Sheri. The next report is from Policy Committee, Linda?
We, if you look at the consent agenda, that's what we did in Policy Committee, we reviewed the IASB Press Update 89, and we talked about kindergarten and school assignment a bit, and credit card, and procurement cards, and some, the student records administrative procedures update from Don Tofano. We'll be talking about several of those again, so.
You also went to the IASB dinner, and did you want to say a few words about that?
Um, yeah, I did. I went to the, the dinner, the fall dinner, and it was actually, yeah, there was a speaker on community engagement. It was very timely and very well-done. The, I can't think of her name at the moment, but it was great. And I, I felt like it was very timely for us going into strategic planning, and I found myself thinking about a lot of things she said while I was sitting there in the group. They talked a lot about how you need to make sure that your intent and your use of community engagement, engagement is authentic. And I kind of kept noticing group members saying a few things where maybe in the past, or maybe they haven't felt that it was authentic. So it was really good to, to kind of live what she was saying, that we were authentically really wanting this information, and to see how people reacted. So that, it was, it was a really great presentation, and I would recommend. The speaker they had was great, so I'm not sure in the spring.
Any other takeaways from community engagement?
I had the whole slide presentation. I can't remember off the top of my head right now.
Okay, if you get a chance to do.
Yeah, I could pass, I know I passed one to Jeff, I can pass one to you. Yeah, no.
Why don't you?
But it was interesting. I ended up sitting at a table with a whole other board from Norwich, maybe, so that was kind of fun. I was, I was like adopted into their school, school board for a night.
District 80 or 79?
I don't remember. I don't remember, but it was, it was a very nice event, and the speaker was very worthwhile.
Tyra, you probably worked for both of them, though, right?
Uh, just 80.
Oh, okay.
Just 80. 79, I must.
It was one of them, right?
Yeah, I can't remember.
You name it, I've got it.
Next item, up to the Finance Committee, Rich?
I don't have a Finance Committee update, but I do want to give an update on an EdRed meeting that we attended. Jeff and I attended an EdRed meeting, and that's the Educational Research and Development Group, which essentially monitors education policy in Springfield. We heard a few different state legislators speak, specifically Jason Berickman, I think he's downstate Illinois, Barrington, or Bloomington, Illinois, Laura Fein from Northbrook, and Will Davis from the South Suburbs. Essentially, they, they reviewed the, the upcoming legislation, or the legislation that's on the docket, Senate Bill 16 and Senate Bill 1403, and they, they reviewed the content of those policies, but essentially spent the remainder of the meeting talking about the gridlock in Springfield, and how they don't really expect any progress on this in the near future. But I do think it's a valuable group to be a part of and voice our concerns at, and essentially understand, get a better insight for what's happening down in Springfield for legislation that's, that's most likely going to affect us. Maybe not in the near future, but definitely soon.
Rich, just a real quick question. I, I'm familiar with Senate Bill 16 and what's kind of not going on with that bill at the moment. What was the other bill you mentioned?
Senate Bill 1403, which is an evidence-based, an equity funding model. Evidence-based, an equity funding model.
So it's a finance-oriented?
It's an alternative way of fun, right now, there's a certain, what I, what I gather could be a very old and obsolete funding formula for the schools that evidently, from, what I took away was that no one likes the current formula, but they can't agree on a new formula. And so this senator, what was his name again, the state senator?
Uh, it was Will Davis. Or no, you're talking about Jason Berickman.
Jason Berickman was proposing a, an alternative way of funding schools with state money.
All right, but is...
So he's got a bill, and this is his bill, basically.
Right, is that different than SB 16, or is that, is that an alternative?
It is different.
Is that an alternative to SB 16?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
I don't. So it talks about student-teacher ratios and the data that they use for those funding decisions, and how essentially it doesn't really account for regional cost variations. So obviously, teacher salaries in the northern part of the state are more than necessarily teacher salaries in the southern part of the state.
Whole different criteria than what they're using to fund now.
This is déjà vu, because 20 years ago, they were all into that, trying to wait different parts of the state of Illinois. You know, you can have a beginning teacher that can afford to live in an apartment in downstate and a lot less money than somebody up here. And so they actually waited all the counties, but that never went anywhere. It just kind of died, and they're resurrecting it now, maybe 20 years later, so. I've been around too long.
Yeah, it's obviously very thorny issues they're confronting.
Thank you.
They can't even do their own budget.
They talked about a couple other Senate bills, but essentially in the context of how there's just complete gridlock right now.
Gridlock, but with the understanding that things cannot continue, basically, that somehow kind of made a point where something has to happen. All right, thanks, Rich. Okay, the next item.
Jeff, one second. The board member comments, is, is that when the board has the opportunity to, to make a comment?
Yes, to, by, yes.
Yeah, I guess we kind of, kind of quickly move through that. I would just like to, to thank Mr. Pat, and Don, and Mr. Petito for their work with the Friday Fizz, and some other work there they're doing with the IT department. I think it's, it's really outstanding. I don't know if the other board members have seen this, but they're releasing a, a weekly update, IT update, right, from your office? And I learned several things about our IT department through that, so I just wanted to...
Well, thank you for the thank you, but I take absolutely no credit for that, because I can't even run the answer. But, you know, Don and Bob both have done a fabulous job.
The Friday Fizz is a newsletter or something about this?
It's essentially a, an end-of-the-week report that actually, Bob Petito has an idea he came up with last year. It's been going for, I think it's mid-year last year?
Yeah.
In March, March.
How is it distributed?
It, it essentially points out a few different items, shows what teachers are doing in the classroom. It's not an informational item. So just to get some, some information out there on a weekly basis.
How is it distributed, and who is it distributed to?
It's posted, what you want to talk about.
Sure, it's posted on the website itself, and it's also emailed out to staff, so all the buildings, as well as the district office as well. And then from there, it's also blasted via social media, so it covers all bases on what's happening with technology department here at Sherrane's.
Thank you.
So again, thank you, Randy, for your thank you, but I take absolutely no credit for anything technological.
As a little follow-up to that, I learned in the Friday Fizz about the work that Don and Bob are doing on Wednesday afternoons after school. They're offering professional development to teachers for an hour on IT issues. And that's very commendable, so thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Anyone else have any other comments?
Next item on the agenda is the new business, and this is, these are discussion items only. The first item is a proposal to commission a musical composition for, basically an original composition for the middle school music, music department. Cost would be $4,500, and I think the, the composition would be done sometime in 2017 or 2018, I guess.
Couple years down the road. And I've asked Bill House to, you know, since I, not only am not technologically adept, but musically not adept either, to, you know, kind of speak to the point of the, the composition, so.
Commissioning up work for our kids, we feel would be a great asset, an exciting opportunity. We did it through Reef a number of years ago for fourth and fifth grade chorus, and it seemed to be a really motivating opportunity for them, as well as for the teachers. I mean, it was very exciting for me to work with composer, and Jayne Lordson to work with composer, to get those pieces together. And we are, our hope is that we would be able to fundraise, to pay, but as happens in the business world, you can't have someone do the, the work without paying them some money. So we're not up to that point yet. So the hope would be, from the music department, that we would be able to raise funds. I know the HRC has already, uh, uh, offered, I can't think of the word, but has said they will give $100 toward it. Mr. Columbo is kind of the spearhead for the project. He's the one who found the composer. I think he found, talked to people at the Midwest Band Orchestra Clinic, has been to his website, talked to him as a composer. So that's the, the real, the part, part of the, like, big push is, maybe you never know, it could be something that we continue to do, but we have to start somewhere.
What grade is this for? Because I worry about the two-year time lag there.
Yes, it is for, well, it, it'll be for the middle school orchestra and percussion, I think, is what it's there for. The, so my guess, and this would be a Mr. Columbo more question, but is seventh and eighth grade with possible percussion? So it would be for the kids right now who are in fifth and sixth grade, if they, if it was delivered in 2018.
17, 17, yeah.
Would you consider this, I guess, a supplementary piece of curriculum for your students, or for Mr. Columbo's students? How are you guys approaching this? Is it more of...
It would definitely be something that, I mean, the composer, we would discuss with the composer, our needs, our kids, you know, what, what things need to happen. You know, obviously, we don't want the composer writing something that's for a, you know, the Chicago Symphony Orchestra. They can't play that. But, you know, it would be a piece that, well, like most new creations, you never really know what the end result's going to be, but we can say, hey, we, in fifth, in sixth and seventh and eighth grade, we work on dotted rhythms. So let's make sure they're dotted rhythms. Let's, you know, extend ranges for the instruments. Let's make, so we can talk to the composer and let him know, you know, these are the constraints, these are where the kids are, this is where... this is where they've come from, this is, so we can ask for certain things, yes.
I wonder, to some degree, if, you mentioned fundraising, you said that in the past it's been done through Reef, which I think was like a nonprofit that supported initiatives like this. To what extent would, if the kids were involved in fundraising for something like this, would that give them more of a sense of ownership? You know, that this is something they're working toward, you know?
Right.
As opposed to just saying, well, you know, here it is?
I don't think we actually had the idea that kids would be fundraising.
Okay.
That it would be the district music teachers taking this on.
Especially with the two-year lag, it'd be hard to ask a seventh grader right now to fundraise for something that they're not...
Right, and we don't want the kids, you know, we don't do fundraising for many things.
Right.
High school music program does.
And really, we don't want to get started, at least my personal opinion is, we don't want to get started with having kids doing fundraisers for something like this. This, in my vision, is music teachers, you know, we used to do the recital, maybe it could be brought back that way, or there could be ways that we could go into the community to solicit for donations for.
Okay, this was mainly to bring it forward to the board and that it'll be on next month's agenda to, you know, either do or not do. I think what it is, you need seed money, basically, is what it comes down to. You need a deposit to get the process rolling.
To get it started, yeah.
Are there any other questions or comments about this?
Have you worked with, or has Mr. Columbo worked with this composer before? Is this the first?
I don't think he has worked with this composer in the past.
I read the materials on him, he looks very accomplished.
He's done a lot of things. All I know is Mr. Columbo has talked to him. I don't, I'm 99% sure he's never worked with him before.
You go to his website?
I did, I looked at the material.
He's got like his compositions on there by grade level, and you can actually listen to them.
I know, it's great. I was just curious if you had any collaboration before.
No.
I just have a quick question. Why does it take two years? And I'm not a musician by any stretch, but that just seems a very long stretch of time, right?
I don't know.
I mean, the creative process.
I'll answer that. Some is probably creative process, some is probably, I have other commissions, and so, you know, because people commissioned me two years ago, oh, I have to finish their composition now. And so there's, especially, I mean, if you look at the number of compositions he's done, he probably then, the more you compose, the more people want you to compose, so then people contact you, and so it probably gets pushed further and further out as you get more and more popular.
You should do a recital again and charge admission.
That might happen.
I think he was already thinking that.
Oh, sorry, 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 I mean, it was your idea.
It was, it was, so.
I like the reciting, good.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thanks very much, thank you.
Thank you.
The next topic on the agenda is the District 96 website revision. Mr. Petito and Mr. Tifano are going to give us an update on the website revision.
Excellent. I don't know if I pull up here. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity for me to be here and introduce myself, but also the website enhancements and updates that we've done so far. We don't have a formal presentation for this, we're just planning on showing you some of the enhancements that we've already made, and then going forth and talking about the enhancements that we plan on making, and if they end, then we'll kind of open it up to get your feedback as to our spending so far. Those of you who haven't yet, I'm Bob Petito, I'm the Special Technology Coordinator for the district, so thank you for the segue. Appreciate that. All right, so some of the things that we've already done in terms of the website and its enhancements, and I think that the biggest and most important thing that we've done so far is actually provide a professional development to those who are the content creators of the website. The technology department does not have sole reign over the content that is being put onto the website, that's more for the content managers, the curriculum department for the curriculum page and so forth, right? And the building administrators for their own pages and so forth. The technology department, we're charged with creating those shells, those pockets and buckets for the places for them to put the information in. So giving that professional development to those who are the content managers has been huge. I know I've worked with Canwell Shaw and Merrill, and I've worked with the building administrators as well, so that they are more comfortable with updating their sites on a regular basis. Some of the things that we've done so far, in addition to that, is updating the calendars as well. So the previous, I guess, process for updating the calendar that was on the website was the building principals and building administrators would forward all of the dates that they wanted updated on the website to one person here in the district, and that one person would have to touch one machine and update the building calendars across all the websites, which can be very inefficient, especially if that person is absent for the day or so forth, right? So we actually turned that over to the building administrators, showed them and gave them professional development as well as to how to update the calendars from their end, and then when they make the update, it automatically feeds into the website, and then the website calendars that you see here for each of the schools, whether it's for the district or for each of the schools, then is, I guess, elaborated into the main district calendar, which then houses all the dates for all the schools. So now there's more control at the building level of updating their own calendars. The next thing that we did was we cleaned up the curriculum instruction page. So I worked with Merrill, I think, just a couple weeks ago, and we cleaned up the page, we removed a lot of scale content, updated content, and then also kind of reorganized it as well. We put in a plugin that allowed for Google Drive integration, so now it's even easier to put the content, the most up-to-date content into the website as possible, simply by updating a Google Drive folder that Merrill has access to. So the moment she puts in a file, it automatically shows up on the website, for example, and so it's really easy to access those files. And I instructed other content managers how to do the same thing for their websites. Another thing that we had done was updated the instructional technology page. A couple of things we did, we left-aligned the page, cleaned up a little bit as well, we added some site navigation here as well, we included a brand-new one-to-one program website that hadn't existed. I think it was locked away with some Wiki site that had existed for a couple of years and was never updated, so we put a new one-to-one program site together for the project, and that's being constantly updated as well. We put together a list of our online resources, which again is being updated continually as new resources are being embedded and approved by the district. We put together a student resource as well, so a student-on-demand page. This is actually the homepage for all of the student devices as well, which is really nice, so all we have to do is update this resource, and it automatically updates all the homepages for all the student machines. Another thing we did was, again, we worked with the building administrators, Howser specifically, since they are middle school, they do have different needs than the elementary schools, being athletics and activities and so forth, that the other elementary schools don't necessarily have. So we might want to make sure that those resources were available in a more prominent manner on the website. So some things that we had done was I worked with Jason to show him how to update his menu, so he has a more robust school menu, which includes the athletics and the activities, and he was able to include sub-pages and things like that. I also showed him, as well as the other building administrators, how to update their slideshow, which I think no one had updated last year, so we're actually starting to update it now, which is really nice. So I'm looking at the Blithe page, for example, and I know Ken Merrill did a really nice job of putting up some recent pictures of things that were happening on her building, and so trying to show other building administrators how to do the same thing. So Jason's utilizing that, not only for the pictures, but also, as you can see here, for kind of news announcements. I think it's working out really nicely. Some other things we've done is updated the caching process based on recommendation, and we noticed quite a significant change in the way that pages load on the website, which is also very nice. I know there were a few times at the end of last year or the beginning of this year where page loads were inconsistent and tend to be pretty slow, and after the caching services that we enabled, the page results have been about 30 times faster, so it's been a significant improvement. And the last thing we did in terms of the backend of the WordPress site is we enhanced the security. We worked with GoDaddy, who is our web hosting solution, and we approached an additional site lock feature, which allows for malware blocking and web crawling limitations, so that way abusive web crawlers aren't draining resources from our page and thereby slowing down websites. In terms of the planned items that we have going for, I know that some websites have been suggested to us in terms of design and features and where those things are located, so as we work with the content owners of the websites, we'll be able to show them, again, how to put that content into the website and put it into the appropriate places. And so our charge is being able to, one, designate a point person for those different types of sites, so the building administrators for their site, administrators for their portions of the website, and just really detailing who's going to be doing which portion of the website, and then offering more professional development to those people as things arise. We plan on making slight adjustments to the site to improve the overall design. One suggestion was given to us from a different district, and I took a look at it and I noticed that there was a consistent footer, and that really all of the design was put into the footer of the page, where here, our footer of the page has basically a lot of social getting in contact, and this is what's being propagated across all the sites among all of our websites. And so I saw that we could utilize this in a different manner in terms of putting our actual content into the footer, and then that would propagate across all of the sites so that no matter which page you're on, you see a calendar and you see the news. A little mock-up that I did would look something, maybe something similar to this. Oops, I missed one there. Yes. Maybe something similar to this, where this middle section in the white area could be like hot links, could be iconic-driven buttons that would lead out to some featured websites or featured resources or surveys or things like that, but then underneath they would have your news, upcoming events, a quick links section, and then so have your getting-in-touch social media. And of course, then this would then propagate across all the pages. So for example, if I wanted to talk, look at the Board Education Readings page, right? I'd have the meeting page that we are accustomed to looking at, but then at the bottom of the page, right, they'd have the same thing, so you'd have your news. So for that across, flow across all the pages, all the different schools in our district. Other things we want to look at doing is creating a site map, which we don't currently have in place, so basically it's a root-level page, it has all the listings of all the pages for all of our sites, just in text format, so that way those with visual impairments can easily navigate the site without having to worry about graphics or navigation. So that's one thing we're planning on doing. We are going to audit our pages for scale content and work with those content creators to clean up the sites as appropriate. Part of the charge last year in terms of the website updating was just basically kind of big, was making sure that we just kind of overhauled the site in terms of design and making it look more friendly, but it was just a one-to-one transfer of the content behind the scenes. So this year, we're looking at, we're getting maybe reading to the actual sites and making sure that the content holders are updating their sites appropriately. In addition to that, we want to make sure that whoever is going to be the content owners of the website, again, to have clear documentation as to how they go about updating the sites and working with them to provide professional development, so they can feel comfortable updating the site on their own. We're going to establish periodic review process, so for those that maybe only touch their website in terms of updating it once a quarter, right, we can help them along with that as well, and really establishing when those pages need to be updated and making sure they are updated in a timely fashion based on a schedule and not just what happens to come into our lap, right? And the last is giving community a vote, which I've obviously assumed because they're the ones who are wanting to be knowing the site more than any teacher or any student, so offering surveys and maybe nights where it's just a meeting, I don't have a PTO meeting where I give a solicitor feedback from the parents and from other stakeholders as to what they want to see from the website as well.
Let me reiterate what Randy said, Bob, what fabulous progress, really great, very different, right?
Yes.
And thank you for thanking me, but I have nothing to do with it. Give all the accolades to this gentleman.
No, it's great. I think you've made a lot of progress. I understand that you did meet with some community members, is that right, to get some feedback earlier in the month?
We did. Yeah, it was a parent who also is, whose job is communications, so she was able to give us some feedback as to certain aspects of the site and what makes the basic changes, actually, in terms of the things we've kind of organized a little bit. But, yeah, we're taking that into heart and looking to roll out the design that she hasn't, that she had suggested to us and kind of globalizing it across all pages.
You said that you're looking to basically get, have ownership, have someone have ownership of every section of the website, basically?
Correct.
Have you finished that process or are you still in the process of finding?
We're still in that process, but we were able to pinpoint a couple of different things. So with the curriculum, for example, the curriculum page after training Merrill, so now she feels a bit more comfortable with the backend of the site, the special education department as well, so now there's a point person in the special education department who's updated her portion of the site. All the building administrators feel a bit more comfortable as well, so we want to reach out to all the other departments that we have listed, possibly here, so.
Great, great. Thanks very much. Any other questions or comments?
No, I've just noticed as a parent, it's coming together, and I appreciate all the work.
I have just one comment.
Please.
The who to, the contact, you know, at the very bottom, I would love if that could be much further to the top. There are just times where people are looking for a phone number or even just the school hours. I know this is crazy, I should know the school hours, but there's been several times this year, because I don't drive my kids to school, I'm like, what time do they get out? So just a very basic, like, address, phone number, who to contact, school out, you know, just the basic thing, somebody's coming into the community that's just right there or a parent that should know.
Right, on the side or something like that.
Yeah, just something, just so you don't, because sometimes you get through all that news and you're like, oh, I must have missed it.
You can waste a lot of time looking for things.
So just the contact to be higher up so that, that's my only.
Along those same lines, I would suggest to move the search box up on the page as well.
So there is other places where this search could be, it could be also here as well.
Yeah, just have it, yeah, right now, the search box is in the header at the bottom, is it not?
There's one here, there's also a search here.
Okay, if you know what that is.
Yeah, we can make this so by default, just that I didn't find the last bit about why I'm today, we could change it a little behind it and actually say there was a search.
Yeah.
The phone number is here. The original design, the email address was up here as well, but after talking to a couple of the building administrators, they didn't want the building, they didn't want the principal's email address right at the top of the page because then...
They'll get a lot of email. No, I hear you, I completely hear you.
And then Merrill also did request that the school hours be posted to the page, so actually just...
And I know that's crazy, I should know the school hours, right?
We changed, though.
It's slightly different.
To calculate height, I was filling in for the kindergarten hours, and I couldn't find the...
So one thing we did is actually, next to the calendar here, is a button, not the school hours. And so they click the button, then.
Perfect. I do think, I think that Howser website, I was looking at that a bit, looks so much better, so much easier to find what you're looking for, and the newsletters they've been sending out to are fantastic.
Could we look at the quick links real quick?
Yeah, these are just some examples. Another thing that we didn't, I actually didn't have on my list here, is that we actually did enable Google Analytics on the page, which wasn't enabled for our district in the past.
Randy, this is just prototypes, so this isn't live.
Right, this is, the Google Analytics allows us to see who's accessing our page, what kind of demographic of people are accessing a page, from which devices, and the hotspots on the websites, which websites are most popular. So based on that data, I put together this quick links. So these are the top seven sites that people are accessing besides the student resources page and the staff resources page.
I have a question. Don, I don't know, maybe you recall, I don't know if you were here, Bob, last year, but Bob, now... year, but Babna had hired somebody to kind of go over the website, and she, that person made a bunch of suggestions, as some of you might recall. Is that, is that something that's being referred to at all, or, you know, because there were some suggestions in there, or do you, did you never see it, or?
You know-
It's a little low. We'll have to get the little boy back to-
Yeah, raise it up.
You know, Bob and I talked about that earlier this morning, and we don't recall, we didn't, there was no formal report that we were given regarding that, and I know that Bob had worked individually with Babna on some of the changes, but we didn't have anything documented as far as any-
I'll dig it up, because at one point, we did get it, and then the only other comment is as part of that, both she did it and then the attorney firm that we had at the time, which was not forensic, but somebody else, just took it on themselves just to audit. There are certain things required by the state, so I'll just find that and make it available. But I'm just, just asking to make sure that the things that are required are there.
No, and we did talk about it, we'll add it to kind of our planning process that we've mapped out for the strategies that we're going to take to update the website. So, it'll be another component of the process that we created.
Great. If there are, if there are any other comments, thanks very much for the presentation. You guys are making great progress.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is, it is good work. It looks a lot, the menus make a lot more sense.
And speaking of the menus too, I know that even as we get suggestions, I know that, I think you had suggested a couple of different changes.
Well, something was, something was moved and I couldn't find it.
So, we actually did update the school boards menu.
I appreciate that.
So, so the school board menu, now we have the GEDs and minutes, which takes you right to board book. So, we have that as well. More policy manuals, takes you right to the manual, other than to a webpage for-
Right, right.
Oh, that's a great, that is great.
I think part of the, in website design, is thinking, how can we get there in as few clicks possible? And that's really how we have to try thinking about it.
We noticed that structurally, we were linking to pages, you had to link to another page to get the information that was telling you you were supposed to get, so that's part of that cleanup process.
Thanks very much.
It's really good, and, thank you.
Thanks again.
The next item we have is old business, and the first item on old business is to discuss or approve the approval of the District Architect to develop plans and specifications for two items. One is the elevator at Hauser, and the other is window replacement at Blithe Park. Is there a motion to approve the District Architect to develop plans and specifications for the elevator at Hauser and the window replacement at Blithe Park as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I would, I guess I would like to know what the architect has found out about the elevator location, proposed elevator location. Do we know more about it now than we did a few weeks ago?
Yes, a little bit. We had, Mr. Cat, a contractor, opened up some holes. We do know that it's concrete. The next step we'd like to do is that one of the floors, just open up a larger area, just so we can get a better idea of all the structure that we're affecting, but it looks like right now, it's some sort of concrete joist system that we can, you know, that we believe we can work with, so.
Oh, good.
We have a $15,000 quote for moving electrical in that vicinity, so that we were talking about-
There is some, there is some piping as well, as we-
Structurally, though, it appears you can work with it.
Yeah, it's a, it's a concrete frame. There is a column right in the wall next to the door, so as you're walking into the conference room and into the classroom, immediately to your right, there's a concrete column there. So, we do have to push the elevator back, we can't pull it forward like we did originally. But again, that's just a, just, we're going to fall in, we just want to avoid the main, the main beams, so. We do want to open up a little more just to see exactly how far back, but structurally, so far, it doesn't seem to be a-
Any other comments?
The second question on the Blithe windows is, want to make sure that we're still pursuing an alternative other than steel?
That's the final.
Okay, that's very good.
When that package was put out back in '01, I mean, there's been developments in, you know, in window technology since then, so.
I mean-
We're making more historic-type windows out of aluminum.
Okay, very good.
So, we'll research that.
Sure.
If there are no other comments, Margie, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye. The next item in old business is approval for the architect to finalize bidding of the parking lot paving at Central Hauser and Hollywood as an alternative. Is there a motion to approve the District Architect to finalize bidding of parking lot paving at Central Hauser and Hollywood as an alternative as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we get the basketball hoops for Jago Bryan?
Well, that's actually a very good point, because there are things like that-
Well, we're doing the parking lot, what a perfect opportunity.
We should, we should actually talk with the principals and PTOs and find out if there are recreational things that should be added now rather than later.
Right, so just right now, we're talking back, basically paint back what's there.
Yeah.
But if there's areas you'd like to add, or you want to look at a spot to add-
Well, add basketball hoops, for example, or-
Well, right, I assume they're embedded in the concrete, yeah, asphalt, so.
Again, I mean, even that type of equipment is certainly something you guys could also buy direct.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't have to be in the bid, but we can always plan for it.
Right, the question is whether we should install it before we do the paving, or, you know, how that works exactly.
Probably do it after.
After, okay.
Okay. It was just a silly thought I had, but you were standing there, and I thought, why aren't we thinking about what the kids are playing with?
Just a matter of finding a good location, you know, where we pick that location.
Not just kids, it's great therapy to go out and shoot some hoops, you know?
You're going to go out?
During the day, yeah. Dynamite.
And Little Jago Bryan has been at this for two years, because I've gotten calls from him as PTO president as well.
I've heard of this before, I didn't know he was responsible.
Yes, so I-
But we could also add a bid too, it's not-
And I know we looked into it a little bit last year, because-
We expect that kind of support.
He'll be impressed at how quickly we acted. Maybe.
Are there any, any other comments about this motion? If not, then Margie, could you please call the role, please?
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Morello?
Aye.
Ms. Mangia?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Brockway?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The next item is the discussion of the Playground Committee. The superintendents have come up with two options for the directions that we could ask the Playground Committee to take. It's in the option number one, and option number two in the attachment. Option number one essentially charges the committee to look at playgrounds at Hollywood, and in particular, at how it relates to the younger two- to five-year-old age group, as well as looking at the playgrounds at the other schools, and taking a comprehensive look at Playground Situation with the initial focus being Hollywood, but then also looking at the other playgrounds. Option number two is restricting the committee's work just to the Hollywood two-to-five age group. So, those are the two options the superintendents have given us, recommended on this, so we have to decide whether we want option one or option two, first of all, for the committee.
I only have one clarification. It only mentioned the installation for the second option for Hollywood. I would assume that for the first option, that would include going through with the Hollywood installation, and not just a recommendation.
Right, right.
Okay.
I see that the, the committee that's being proposed is made up of, of all the schools.
Right.
So, with that in mind, I would, I would suggest that we do the first option.
Okay. Any other suggestions on that point?
I agree with that. I think that, you know, Linda's suggestion at the, was it last week's, no, last committee, the whole meeting was a very-
We're always here, right?
Whatever meeting it was, it was a very good suggestion that we should do a comprehensive look at all the facilities.
And I think we need to make sure it's not just focused on playground structures, but outdoors.
Outdoor research.
Outdoor space and how we're using it for activity.
Basketball hoops, you know?
There is a Wellness Committee that Ms. Shaw is putting together, and in some, some sense, I know they're like, will be looking at phys ed and recreation and recess, and maybe that the committees can somehow talk to each other, and, because this is, in a way, I agree with you, is a subset in a way.
Right.
Can you remind me if there's a physical therapist on this committee, like, do they suggest in this show?
On the playground?
On the playground, on the playgrounds?
There is.
On the Wellness Committee, there's not, there's a nurse.
Okay.
And PT, health teacher, but-
Yeah, there was a PT.
Oh, here she is, Maryland turn, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So, it sounds like there's a consensus to go with option, option one?
I think it makes most sense.
Right.
So, is there a motion to charge the Playground Committee to investigate playgrounds at all schools in the, according to option one as presented?
So moved?
Second.
Any, any further discussion? Margie, could you call the role, please?
Ms. Mangia?